Welcome to our twenty twenty-three budget hearing. Janet, you will call.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Okay, we'll be opening the budget hearing for twenty twenty-three Franklin County budget. Janet, do you want to go ahead and start?
Just for the public, we have a very brief presentation on our budget. I'd just like to start by saying that we've had, we've had four meetings specific to the budget. Prior to getting to this point, we had two full, pretty much full days of study sessions that were open to the public, where the commissioners heard presentations from all of our department heads. And then we had two meetings that were specific to our community partners that we fund as part of our budget. So this will be just an overview. So for starters, our budget this year is increasing four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. And our budget for twenty-two thousand twenty-two was seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And our proposed budget for twenty twenty-three is seventeen million, five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's a two-point-four percent increase if you reviewed on your revenue neutral rate statements. And this is all information that was on there. If you take a look at the, at the words on the bottom, those are our different funds that we have. And you can see that each of our funds have gone up slightly. So our, our budget increases that we have this year, we have a quite large number for our, our increases in our salaries. We are proposing in this budget an increase to salaries of one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. We're also increasing software costs for a new modern software system that we reviewed at several meetings this year before the commission voted to approve that. Also, as you know, fuel costs overall are up. And we have three major departments that rely on fuel, Public Works, Ambulance Department, and our Sheriff's Department. And together, the three of those departments, the fuel costs are up a hundred thousand dollars for our next year's budget. Obviously, if fuel costs go down, we won't spend all of that, but we have to plan for that. We did increase our community partners, which are those things like services for the elderly, COF, Prairie Paws, the fair. Many of those things that are vital services to our community that receive tax dollars. Those are up twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So you can see all of these things, and our total increase is only four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So we had to make savings somewhere else.
Janet, before you get into the savings portion, I just want to talk a little bit about the increase in salaries. As the five of you know, those recommendations were made pursuant to a pay study that my staff and I spent considerable time on whereby we compared our wages with local, surrounding local governments, including Miami County, Osage County, Anderson County, Douglas County, Johnson County, the City of Ottawa, several others. Those increases that we're recommending, and as you all saw during our, our budget hearings, aren't putting us ahead of the curve. These are increases designed to keep us competitive with surrounding local governments. The thought being if we can't hire and retain employees, then we can't provide services. So we at the very least need to be competitive with governments, some of which are much smaller than us. Go ahead, Janet.
So as far as budget savings, we're always looking for ways that we can save money in our budget. We as taxpayers have, have no, no goal to raise our own taxes. Like, we don't have a goal to raise anyone else's taxes either. Our budget savings are six hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Were things that we were able to either find staffing efficiencies. We took some funding out of miscellaneous areas that we had been saving for. And we have now made arrangements to, to use alternate funds if those things were necessary. We are planning to pay off some bonds this year ahead of schedule. And so the bond payments will save us some funding that will, will result in savings in the budget. And obviously, closing down the juvenile detention center.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I want to talk about staffing efficiencies. So it, it's so tempting when you see, you know, budgets that increase, and ours is up four hundred thousand, to think government is growing. The Franklin County government is not growing. Inflation has made it such that it costs us more to operate. But from a staffing perspective, we're actually down twenty-five employees over the last six or seven years. That's over ten percent of our workforce. So we're not adding employees, we're actually reducing employees. But we want to be able to do more for the ones that we have. Because we believe that a, a better paid employee is going to get you a more talented employee that will lead to better services. So the idea is to reduce numbers, but be able to do a little bit more for the ones that we have. Which again, is trying to stay in line with surrounding local governments. The JDC decision wasn't an easy one to arrive at. But again, that was done after a lot of very detailed deliberate analysis. And, and frankly, it just, the need for the service wasn't there like it was when that facility was constructed. And, and we just, we don't see it as, as being viable moving forward. So the budget savings were just, it was easily worth it in my, in our mind to go ahead and do that. Bond payments, the intention is basically to use excess stimulus funds to pay off local debt. In doing that, we, we, I forget the exact number, Janet, but we're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars of interest over the life of the bonds. So again, we felt like that was a no-brainer.
Finally, our overall budget, our mill rate for last year was fifty-eight point zero four-three. And our projected mill rate for this budget is fifty-three point eight four-three, and that's down four-point-two mills.
Over. So this is the sixth budget that we've done. And over six years, we're actually down nine mills. You know, we look at property values, and property values continue to go up. That's not a Franklin County thing. That's a global thing. At the very least, that is a United States of America thing. We can't control the, the global economy. But what we can do is try and adjust our mill levy as best we can to offset those increases in, in value. And so down over nine mills in six years. I, I hope that's something the five of you are proud of. Because that's something that my staff and I spent a lot of work on to achieve.
I'd just like to add one more thing before we wrap up. On the cover sheet for this agenda item today on our agenda, it talks about new improvements. The previous budget law used to allow us to take a, a, take new improvements and, and be able to levy taxes on that so we could provide the same services to say new housing developments, new businesses, things like that. This new budget law does not allow us to do that. Having said that, if you take what our new improvements are in this budget year and you apply this mill levy to it, it would result in two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which is seventy-five percent of our increase. So that really effectively means that we only have a little over a hundred thousand dollar increase on our existing properties if you had no change to your property. So it's very minimal. I think that's all we have, really.
Okay, this is a budget hearing. So.
Do an emotion to open it?
I need a motion?
Yeah. I, I will move that we open the budget hearing.
Second.
All in favor of opening the budget hearing?
Aye.
Okay, it's a hearing. Anybody that wants to come up and make a comment, please come up and make a comment.
State your name and address.
Please state your name and address if you come up to make a comment.
Uh, who wants to be first? There we go. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Slavoff. I live at eight-eight-five North Elm Street in Wellsville. All right. So I did have one question. Is it true that, that cities within Franklin County are having to increase their taxes by as much as eighteen percent? Because Franklin County is demanding more in dispatch fees?
Because Franklin County is what?
Manding more in dispatch fees.
So what did we increase? So you're from Wellsville?
Correct.
And another portion for, it's proportioned basically the percent of usage of the nine-hundred-and-one center, dispatch center, is the percent you pay. I don't know, Wellsville joined that and their percent went up. What is it? Forty thousand?
We haven't arrived at a deal with them yet.
So they haven't started?
They haven't done anything yet. I mean, to, to respond directly to your question, no, it's not true that they were forced to do anything. We are working with them on partnering on a joint fire ambulance station. And as part of that agreement, we're discussing having them starting to contribute to personnel costs in our dispatch center. If they did that, ideally, they would contribute proportionally based on their population, which is the same thing that the City of Ottawa has been doing for years now.
Okay. Reason I ask is because that's the answer that we were given at the Wellsville hearing.
There's nothing, nothing signed, nothing agreed to yet.
Well, it's already agreed to for Wellsville. So I mean, it's, it's eighteen percent increase, and it's already been approved by them.
I don't know what Wellsville's total budget is, but I would imagine eighteen percent would be considerably more than what we would be hoping to work out of, probably more than the entire dispatch budget, I would guess.
I think the number that we've been kicking around is fifty thousand. And I can guarantee you fifty thousand is far less than eighteen percent of Wellsville's entire budget.
One-point-two million is, is around what the budget is.
Actually, this is something been discussed for probably ten years. And just now coming, maybe doing something. And it just brought more delight with the more ambulance calls up there, the more fire calls, the more police calls. It's kind of brought it more to the forefront, but it's something's been discussed for ten years, but nobody's ever went far enough to actually do it.
Our logic there. So I live in Ottawa, pay Ottawa taxes about right at forty-nine, fifty percent of the calls that go to that center are from the city, either the fire department, police department, city. And City of Ottawa pays fifty percent. So Wellsville never has kicked in. I think in the teens is the percentage that comes from that, that area. So I mean, it's a good deal for Wells. They're, you know, thus, thus far haven't. We're, we're trying to make it fair for the other taxpayers, more or less. That's our logic in, in, in having that conversation with them.
And the other part of that that hasn't been discussed is in exchange for that. And again, this hasn't been reduced to writing yet. Once it is, it will go in front of both governing bodies. But Franklin County intends to contribute five hundred thousand towards the joint ambulance dispatch center. Or joint ambulance fire station. And we believe it's a fair partnership for both sides. It will allow us to grow up there. It will lower our response times up there. So we're putting in five hundred thousand for the construction. And in exchange, they're going to start contributing to dispatch. Again, you'll have the opportunity to comment on that, both at Wellsville City Council and here if you'd like. Because that will come back before the governing bodies.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about the police station.
Yes.
I, I keep saying fire station. Yes, thank you, Roy.
Yeah, the police station and the, and the.
And we're not talking property tax dollars either.
Well, that not for our contribution.
Right. That's what I wanted to realize that.
And it might be on the other end.
Yeah.
So is it true that the Franklin County population hasn't grown like over the last twenty-five years?
Look at census, census data, but I think it's pretty.
Pretty flat.
Percent or two.
So i- is it true that it has become two hundred and forty-one percent more expensive to run the local government over the last twenty-five years? And why would you say that is, especially given that the population hasn't changed?
What data are you, what are you talk, the?
So if you look at data from nineteen ninety-seven to twenty-twenty-one, so that's not even factoring in the last couple of years, the local change for the property tax for running the government is two hundred and forty-one percent.
The government, like school district, city, county, everybody?
That's all of it together. So I mean, if you add the entire property tax together, it's forty-four-point-seven million.
That would include school districts. I mean, that would include every entity, I mean.
Okay, so we, we know that it's increased exponentially, but we can't say why. Is, is that?
Can't speak on behalf of taxing entities that we're not familiar with. And you're asking us cold, mind you, to go back twenty-five years when we don't have twenty-five years of data. You're asking us to take you at your word, moreover, which we don't have our own data in front of us. I don't know what USD two ninety did twenty-five years ago. I don't know what the City of Ottawa did twenty-five years ago. I don't have data in front of us on what the county did twenty-five years ago. What I can speak to though is what we've done over the last six years, which is how long we've been doing this budget, and your mill levy is down nine mills. Your staffing has decreased by over ten percent. That is what we can talk about.
Mill change doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, it does.
No, it's, it's based on valuation. So just because you've reduced the mill doesn't mean that you've reduced taxes. It's based on the valuation. So the valuation times the mill is what people pay in taxes.
Your concern's what, your concern's what you write the check for, and I think that's a valid concern. We're not going to get into philosophical debate about the last twenty-five years of taxation and the overreliance on property tax in the state of Kansas, which I absolutely agree on. In Kansas generally, we rely on property tax as opposed to other ways to raise revenue, but more so. That we're over-reliant on property tax in the state of Kansas. But all we're responsible for is this budget this year, which I believe as somebody who may, I pay far more in taxes than I get paid to be here. Like, I'm motivated to lower taxes as much as I can. I think in a year when we've seen inflation far more than this, fuel doubling, this is a very reasonable budget. If you want to have a philosophical discussion about taxation, this really isn't the place.
No, I'm actually glad that you did bring up inflation. And I know Derek spoke to inflation as well. Just so everyone in the room is aware, Franklin County property taxes have actually outpaced inflation by over a hundred and fifty percent over the last twenty-five years.
Again, you're dealing as a whole. You're locking every taxing entity. So again, I live in Ottawa. I can only speak to Ottawa. One of the major drivers of increasing property taxes in Ottawa is the school issue that passed a few years ago. It passed because we chose to tax ourselves that. If you look at Franklin County's budget, which this is a Franklin County government, not every entity in Franklin County meeting. This is a Franklin County government meeting. We're not the driver.
Okay, so.
Thinking of the schools and, and what, what the schools looked like twenty-five years ago, they still had the old Roosevelt Lincoln or the, the old school down on Main Street. They've built a new high school, a new grade school, two new grade schools, new high school, new junior high in the last twenty-five years. And the state used to give a lot of money to the counties. And then they decided, oh, we're not going to give you that anymore. And so you have to come up with some way to, they used to do.
But I guess my point regardless is those are taxes that the public at large chose to put on themselves.
I, I understand that the property tax goes to a lot of different things, like schools, state, local government and whatnot. But just, just the, let's just talk about Franklin County, just the county. It, it's gone from like five million in nineteen ninety-seven to seventeen million now. So I mean, that's a outrageous increase. Okay, no, no comments?
I mean, we're here to talk about this budget. I'd, yeah, and just to come in cold with.
Yeah, numbers that we can't even look up. We're like, where were you when we were having meetings for two days?
Well, that's actually an excellent question because I had no idea about any of these meetings. So how would anybody know? Did anyone?
We post it? We post it? We post it?
On the website?
No, no, no. On, in the newspaper? In the newspaper, they're all, every public meeting is posted.
What newspaper is this?
No, we post our meeting notices on our website. And we would have noticed up our department head budget meetings on our website, just like we do our weekly Wednesday meetings. You all just got the revenue neutral notice. I understand that. We didn't send a mailer out to the whole community for our. So we don't do that for every meeting. We just follow the same procedure that we always.
To send, to send the one, to send the one-page mailer that we sent to you guys, it costs roughly ten thousand dollars to send that out to everyone. I'm sorry?
Why couldn't you put the rest of the dates on that one-page mailer?
What dates?
Well, the budget's something that gets worked on just as a matter of regular business throughout the year. I mean, there's.
And we are not. That, the paper that you guys received is a prescribed form. We are not allowed to make changes to it. It is a state prescribed form. So we can only put on it what the state allows us to put on it. But we can't send that out until everyone is finished preparing their budget documents, which are, which are prescribed by the state also. How we prepare our budget and the timeline that we all have to adhere to is all prescribed by the state also. We have a notify me section on our website where you can be notified of new agendas that come out. And we put, if you are notified, because I get the notifications myself, just so I make sure that the agendas are posted how they're supposed to. Those agendas are posted, and I get an email every time a new agenda is posted. And then those specifically say what we're going to talk about at our meeting. And this body very seldom talks about anything if it is not written on an agenda. Up FranklinC O K S dot org. You can Google Franklin County, Kansas. It'll be the top thing that comes up. Yep, I would get on the, try that notify me section, and it will send you an agenda for every meeting that we have.
An email notification?
It will email you.
Thank you. I'm just curious, what are your thoughts on the website taxrates.org reporting that Franklin County has one of the highest median property taxes in the United States?
Well, what we can, what we're doing is what we need to do to supply the services for Franklin County, Kansas. I have no idea what's going on throughout the United States. Our valuations, we have nothing to do with the valuations on the property. That's governed by the State of Kansas. They do the valuations on all the property. And with those valuations, that sets the amount of, the value of property in Franklin County.
Sure, but as the county commissioner, you set the taxes, it doesn't matter what the valuation is.
What do you mean it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter what the valuation is. You are setting the tax rate. So the property tax is collected based on what you are setting as a taxes. It doesn't matter what the valuation is.
Evaluation is assess the value of the property in Franklin County.
Yeah, they, they have the purview to, to raise or lower the mill as they see fit, regardless of valuations. I would agree with that.
So what are you trying to say, trying to say?
What I'm saying is that we go through every department in the, in our county and see what their needs are to provide the services for Franklin County. And that's how we come up with the budget. So how much are we going to need to provide the services for the county?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How much has groceries gone up in the last two years?
Okay.
How much has the gasoline gone up in the last two years?
I, I understand that everything has gone up. So we're at the highest rate of inflation.
And not two-hundred percent like.
For the last forty years, everyone is struggling, and now you're increasing taxes.
Two-point, two-point-four percent.
Because of what Chairman Dunn is saying, because we have to provide services, right? And we need employees to provide those services. Is, is that where you're headed?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we're, I know all of us in here are probably writing bigger checks every year. All five of us are writing bigger checks every year, just like everyone out there. And we're trying our best to provide the services for Franklin County the best we can and efficiently as we can. And that's, that's our whole purpose here, to provide the services for Franklin County the best we can. And also take care of our employees the best we can. Because as you know, we're fighting inflation right now. We're fighting just having to get employees right now, to fill our positions right now because of competition. That's why we had to go ahead and ra- raise some of our employees' salaries just to be competitive with the counties around us so we have enough employees to, to provide services for the county. And I know we don't have control over what the school does and the other taxing entities in our county does. But we just have control over what our body does. And we're trying to provide the best services we can and as efficiently as we can. And also take care of our employees. And that's what we're trying to do. And, and I know it's, it's tough to be sitting here. Because I know everybody out there is writing bigger checks every year, just like the five of us are writing bigger checks every year. And some, some people feel that's good because their valuations of their property went up, you know, twenty, thirty, or forty percent, if they want to sell it. People aren't selling their property like every year. But they are paying more money at the County Treasurer's Office. We're trying to be as efficiency, as efficient as possible with the funds that we have. And just like Janet said, we were retiring some bonds early and trying to do some other things to try to save money the best we can. And that's.
So far.
That's why we're here tonight to discuss this and try to just let everyone know we're trying to be as efficient as possible. And like Derek and Janet, spent a heck of a lot of time putting together this budget so it could be as efficient as possible.
So far, all your, your questions, your comments have been kind of big picture, philosophical. You're frustrated at rising taxes. I, I agree. What, keeping in mind that local government, especially us, we cannot operate in a deficit. So especially federal government, right? They can always borrow, issue, issue debt. To some extent, the state can go to Cato, issue debt for things they otherwise would have paid cash for. And then, and then it's in effect running a deficit. We can't. Every dollar's tied to a service. If you were to pay less taxes or pay the rate that you want to pay, which assumes less or, or even, what would you do without? What, I've been here twelve, gone thirteen years. I've never, ever had anybody come here and say, hey, I want to pay less taxes. This is something I'm willing to do without. I think that would be very interesting, very favorable conversation. I mean, for myself, like I say, I'd pay far more taxes than I pull out of this place. This, these increased taxes don't go to us. They're going in our pocket. What would you like to see cut? What services do you not value?
No, I appreciate that question. I appreciate what Chairman Dunn said. That actually goes into my next question. So how many employees does Franklin County have?
Yeah, that's a moving target, but somewhere around two hundred right now. With vacancies, I don't know, but I want to say between two and two-ten in terms of positions.
So that's full-time position?
No, because we have seasonal mowers, things like that. It's far cheaper to pay somebody seasonally to mow than to employ them the whole year when you're not.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, is because govsalaries.com reports that Franklin County had two hundred and eighty-five employees in twenty-twenty-one.
See, your data's not, that's not true. Not even close.
Okay.
I appreciate your comments.
Do you want to talk? I would be happy to talk to you. Are you done, sir?
Yes, that's, that's my question to.
We need you to come up where we can hear you and everyone can hear you for one thing.
The, the question was, you have 200 and something employees and you're increasing salaries by one point something million?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true. And that's so that we can try and remain competitive with surrounding governments. So when I was here, okay, let me, let me rephrase. What I always hated, as a contractor, what I always hated hearing from city or, or whatever regulatory industry I had to deal with was, hey, you should go over here and see what they do. Like, somebody doing something worse somewhere else is not justification for doing it one, right? I mean, that makes sense. It's incredibly frustrating. Functionally, we have to raise what we're paying folks, because we have road workers. We'll post a position, not even get an unqualified candidate for three, four months, like no candidates, not even unqualified. Not even some drunk or somebody who just got out of the pen that wants to, yeah, come drive a truck, just nobody. So as a function of the market, we had to raise, we have to raise. And it goes across the board to other services. Folks who work in our ambulance department, like critical, not kind of do you want it or do you not services.
Okay. So, and if, whether it's 210 or 285 according to govsalaries.com, has any study been done in terms of the total aggregate number of employees versus counties in, in other areas?
I did do, I did look that up and other counties comparable to our size in Kansas, we are very similar. And you can't really compare across state lines because not all states operate in the same way. So like the commissioners we're talking about earlier, some states, their, their model according to their statutes rely heavier on sales tax. Some of them rely heavier on other types of tax. If they have a lot of tourism, they can rely on tourism dollars a lot more heavily than we can. But we operate under the model in Kansas. And when I did the research to look at other counties in Kansas that were similarly sized, we are similar. And actually cutting positions where those counties that are similarly sized to us have been adding positions.
There's a core of what your county government does, so clerk, treasurer, registered deeds, sheriff, jail, courts, all those things, by statute, we have to do. We don't have a choice. There's a few things that, as a county, we do that aren't required. So ambulance service is one of them. Transfer station, the waste right out there. Okay, so the government, why don't we get rid of that? Does make the county money, for one thing, so there's no property taxes going to it. And if you look at, if you went to Olathe to dump trash at a waste management facility, for instance, it'd be a hundred some dollar, a hundred bucks a ton, close to, better part of a hundred. I think here it's 30, 40. So that's why we operate that ambulance department. That's a optional thing. If you went to like AMR, a contractor private business, your rates are gonna be higher. Especially in a kind of rural area like this, the service is not going to be what we have. We have a very good ambulance service. And to me, that's not where I would cut, I guess. That's something to be pretty good at.
Yeah, so in terms of comparing our county to other counties within Kansas, I, I think the problem is that Kansas has the third highest number of government employees per citizen in the entire United States. So comparing our county government to the rest of the county governments in Kansas, which are completely bloated, doesn't do anything. It, I mean, I, I took the liberty of comparing Franklin County to other counties in, in other states. And I mean, Clinton, Clinton County, Missouri, population 21,068 county employees. Attar County, Missouri, population of 25,084 county employees. Lincoln County, Oklahoma, population of 33,000, has 172 employees.
So can I, can I just share something really fast? Cool. I did reach out to those particular counties because those were on a report that I saw and I had had questions about previously. And they don't, they don't include all of their employees because some of their larger departments, they consider a separate budget. They don't include it as part of their county budget, even though they do levy taxes for some of those services. So one of those counties in particular did not include any of their law enforcement in, in that count. They did not. And I reached out to two counties and got their budgets. Also, in Missouri, they rely a lot more heavily on sales tax than Kansas does. It's just a different, different level of, of legs on the stool.
Okay. I'll have to look at the difference in sales tax rates, because I, I know my wife personally has, has done quite a bit of business with people in Missouri. And then when, when they're calculating the sales tax in Kansas, they're saying, whoa, your sales tax is so much more. So that's, that's an interesting.
It's not necessarily based on the rate. It's based on, you know, the areas. And that county in particular in Missouri had a lot more businesses specific to, like, I believe a college that they were generating a lot more sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're, when you're comparing the number of employees to other counties and stuff, you don't, you don't know what those other counties are outsourcing certain services or not. Or we, we could outsource maybe several of our services, like the ambulance service, some counties.
You don't have township road department or county road.
Do that. And so it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples.
Well, and exactly. And that's, that's what I was actually gonna ask, is, is what services we're receiving that the citizens on those other counties are. So it's.
You can tell us what they're, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I didn't know that, that you had analyzed the other counties from other states. So you said you had done Kansas, so that's interesting.
What questions do you have about this budget?
Are you saying none of this is pertinent to this year's budget?
You're asking broad philosophical questions, I mean, about the.
I think every single one of these questions is pertinent to this, this year's budget. I, I honestly, I feel like the state of government in Kansas is, is completely bloated and we're going in the wrong direction. The taxes keep going up and up and up. And, and what are we getting for our money? I, I personally don't know. It's, it blows my mind. And, and to be completely honest, my property taxes have gone up over 60%. I'm now paying more in escrow per month than I am in principal towards my mortgage. That's insane. That is totally wrong. Should not be that way.
Have you looked and seen who's driving that? Like, what taxing entity is driving that? Like, it's not this one.
I mean, it's, it's all together.
We're at 2.4% increase when fuel's up. I, I think. Everything, we're in a year when labor's. Yeah, we, and, and, and that's a great question and, and I want to speak to that and try to bring us back full circle. A lot of comments made tonight, both at the podium from in the crowd, that, that I completely understand. To be very clear, we did cut. We shut an entire department down this year. We shut our JDC down. And with that, 12 employees, we, you know, we, we did cut. Before we presented this budget, we looked and we said, okay, where can we do without? We shut an entire department down. We removed two positions specifically, not in addition to the JDC, so about 14 positions. 14 government positions we removed this year. Over the last six years, as I said earlier, it's about 25 positions that were down. I understand the frustration and I'm here to tell you that we are trying. Like, we are going down in employees. Like, that is a fact. Like, 25 less employees. I, yes, it is a 2.5% increase and, but so much of that, we can't control what we pay for fuel. We can't control what we pay. I, I, I get it. It really comes down to what would you like to do without? I mean, we are a representative body and we respond to the wishes of the public. It may feel good to have a. What's that? And it saved us money. Do you, would you?
Would anybody else like to come up and speak? I appreciate everything that you talked about.
Are you at liberty to dismiss me?
Pardon?
Are you at liberty to just dismiss me?
No, no.
We need to keep decorum in here, guys.
No, we're, we're trying to give everybody.
I just have a couple more questions. So what is the, the per capita income of Franklin County citizens?
I couldn't hear that last question.
What is the per capita income of Franklin County citizens? So the average income of each Franklin County citizen?
We need to stick onto this budget. We need to stay on topic.
Topic. That's not what we're here to. It's, it's 25,000. What is the average income of Franklin County employees?
Is your belief, is pertains to the budget, is your belief that we should not give raises or that?
What?
Is your belief, is your suggestion, as it pertains to the budget, that we shouldn't raise the wages?
I, I, so not only that, I, I think we're completely bloated. I think we have way too many employees, first of all. And number two, yeah, yeah, why are we increasing salaries when we're bloated to begin with?
What departments in particular are bloated? Oh, we're here to vote on it tonight.
If it's anything like the Wellsville hearing it talk. So my, my last. My, my last question, I had more, but my, my last question is, is this. What, what would your response be to the 80% of surveyed Franklin County citizens who say that they are planning to vote out the current administration unless drastic measures are taken to reduce the tax burden? Why should they vote for you?
We're not here to discuss that.
Okay. The answer is they shouldn't.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and talk?
My name is Siobhan Jones. I live at 4266 Wyoming Road, just outside of Willsville. I've been there for 23 years and I would like to know what improvements have been done. Nothing. We're on septic. We have wireless internet through a private company. We don't have, our roads are gravel and they're, we're on the county line road. So Miami County does our road. The road from Wyoming Road to 33 has been a mess since we lived there. It, yeah. It's, they, they shove some gravel in there and then it's back to the right, the same way it was. I don't see any improvements out there. Haven't seen any in 23 years. So I'd like guys to explain to me what I'm paying for. Why my property taxes are going up when I have no improvements? That'd be my question.
Anybody else want to come up and talk?
I'm gonna get you guys upset anyway, so. My name's Cyrus Oliver. I live at 1204 N1 Road, Baldwin City, Kansas. It's on the county line. I own property right up next to Walmart. So I had owned that property since 1988, lived there until about the last 18 years when I moved out.
The DC or the, at the, the distribution center, next to Walmart?
Next to Walmart, yeah. And what I get is, what I get is you're talking about mill of these. That's fine. But what I get from the county down here is that every once in a while, they go, hey, we want to change your zoning. I don't want my zoning changed from agriculture. They say, oh, it's the same as R1. I said, no, it's not, because R1, you'd say is designated for residential. And anytime you guys feel necessary, you can raise that. Now, if I'm in with a bunch of farmers and you raise a bunch of farmers, then they all get together and say, hey, you can't do that to us. So that's why I want to stay one. That's my main thing. Now you want to talk about budget. My question is, how much new equipment are you buying? Does anybody know? Are you buying new dump trucks? Are you buying new cruisers for the sheriff's department?
Yeah, our, our equipment, they're all on equipment replacement schedules, sure.
Okay. When you're replaced with brand new, you find a depreciation that's really outrageous the first couple of years. Why don't you buy three-year-old stuff? Three-year-old Caterpillar runs a lot cheaper. And you can go and find them that don't got as many hours on them as some, some people say, oh, they just run the heck out of them. Well, you can find them that don't.
We do the math and sometimes we do buy used. I know we bought used water trucks, compactors, mower. I don't know. We do routinely buy used things when we can. I think we bought a demo, was our van, transport van we just bought? It was a different deal. It fell through, I guess, but it wasn't what, it was an opportunity. It wasn't a brand new what we ordered, but it was cheaper, so we got it. I mean, we do routinely. There's times, though, when we do the math and especially things like the dump trucks, we run the heck out of them until they're gone. If you bought a used municipal dump truck, it's probably had salt in it. It's probably not as good as it looks. We put pencil to paper. I mean. Probably, at, at this point, though, I need an instance what your, you know, same thing with our police cars. Obviously, you need them to run. They're pretty critical, but we keep them until they have 150, 200,000 miles. We get the goodie out of them. Even a new vehicle at 40,000 over 10 years, that's 4,000 in a year. That's pretty good.
Yeah. Well, I understand that. You, you guys seem to think that you have to have newer equipment to make it reliable. That's what you have a mechanic's for. I know that you probably, since you want to talk about wages, one of the other things you should be talking about is training for these employees. Because if you're, got mechanics out there, I hate to tell you that the vehicles you have today is a lot different than the vehicles of 10 years ago. And if you haven't supplied these guys with any training, they're really further behind the curve. And they, where I work, I'm glad I'm retiring in less than two years, because they provide zero training. But yet they expect me to maintain equipment that's, they're not buying new stuff, but they maintain equipment and keep it up in good condition, good enough to keep the state off my back. We transport children. And so my stuff has to be pretty good, kept up. Now, most of my stuff has over 150,000 miles. I got one of the oldest fleets in, in the corporation. I have one of the smallest budgets in the corporation. I find, I went up to Olathe Freightliner and I deal a lot with them. Well, they surprised as hell to find out I was the mechanic. Aren't you the guy that just buys parts? Because of my attitude towards them, either you, I'm getting the. Either you, I'm getting the best price, or I call around. I mean, I don't buy the first one off the shelf. I save two-hundred dollars on an EGR valve by switching vendors. I think you can do a lot of that. Now, I know it takes a little bit more time, but when these people are asking for savings, that's what they're talking about.
And when we buy a vehicle, or we buy culverts, or we buy tires, we have to put it out for bid, and we take the lowest... So, I mean, I think as a government entity, we're required to do that anytime we do anything.
But my main concern was on this. The guy said, you know, mill levy really don't matter. Well, that's true. If you change your zoning and say, okay, you're no longer A-one, you're R-one, and guess what? Since you sit right up beside Walmart, that's a pretty expensive property. Well, Walmart didn't seem to think that when they bought. I was the last one that signed, and I think I made more money than anybody else because I was the last one to sign. I was also the only one that knew it was Walmart. Everybody else took that Chamber of Commerce check and cashed it and run to the bank going, woo. We didn't do that. But again, the man said, mill levy doesn't matter, and I'm saying he's correct. Mill levy doesn't matter if you change, like where I'm at, from R-one or from A-one to R-one. Even though the county now says A-one and R-one's the same, it doesn't mean it always will be. My... It's hay ground as far as I'm concerned. Now, I could go in three years and get someone to plant some soybeans or something on that property. Nobody really wants to mess with thirteen acres, but if they did that, then I could probably go down and say, hey, I'd like to just put that in the federal program, and you pay me not to do anything and make it hay ground remote every year. And I'm sure there's people here that says, well, why don't you do that? But my main concern is the fact that I seem to be bothered by that more than anything else is that they keep on asking to change my zoning. My zoning, I tell... They told me, well, you know, if you don't change it, then there's no guarantee. I sold the Walmart. You know how fast that went through? I sold to the compressor station on the hill. I mean, it was green light. If someone comes and wants to put a truck stop in there, I guarantee you it'll be green light. It won't have no problems with the zoning. It'd be tax-based. Walmart, I don't understand because it was not tax-based because they didn't pay taxes for a long, long time. But it was, oh, we need them jobs. How many people drive a long ways to work at Walmart that don't live in this county? Don't pay any taxes, don't buy any food here, provide nothing for you. But they got a job because we paid their Walmart's taxes. Thank you.
Anybody else like to talk?
I'm Suzanne Santoyo, and I have two properties, forty-one sixty-one and forty-one thirty-nine Highway sixty-eight. I can't really say much what hasn't been said already, but you guys are raising the salaries for people, which I get. Our company had to do the same thing, not to the extent that you guys are raising them. But as far as services, we want to know where that money is going. You know, you closed JDC, so that's a cost savings. What are you going to do for other places in Franklin County, like aging, you know, the seniors? Are there going to be more services for them? Are there going to be more services for mental health for these young people that needed JDC to begin with? You know, our taxes keep getting raised higher and higher and higher. I have one track of ten acres that is just extraordinarily taxed, and I have forty-one acres that is mostly ag. But I do have a mobile home on it. You guys would not let me build a barn home on it because I don't have rural water. Rural water was like thirty thousand dollars to put in because I had to use a county-approved contractor. Why are my taxes going up for my mobile home when a mobile home depreciates? It doesn't appreciate. I can't sell it for what a normal home would be worth. So, why are those taxes keep going up every year? I've had this property since nineteen-ninety-nine, and, you know, I haven't... I'm like the other lady. I have not seen much improvements. Where we live out in the country, there's, you know, no improvements on our roads. I live right off sixty-eight, so we do have all the traffic, you know, stuff like that. But I just... I haven't seen any services changing, especially for the seniors. I have two elderly parents, and I would like to see them get a little bit more benefit. They're on a fixed income. Some of the other people in here are on a fixed income as well. We all are having to deal with inflation, but it's up to you guys to help our county grow, you know, in other fashions other than tax the heck out of all of us.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about the budget at all?
I've talked to several people. I have a lot of friends in Johnson County. We came from Johnson County, and one of the things that I really enjoyed out here was Franklin County, the people. I have so many people tell me that they wanted... They looked at Franklin County to move down here because it's rural, the people are nice, it's a nice community, but they didn't because of the taxes. So, they moved to Douglas, or they moved to Johnson, or they moved to Miami. That's crazy. We're more rural than those areas, and we're paying higher taxes. And again, what am I getting for my raising taxes?
Well, we could go into all the services that we do provide, like the ambulance service, Sheriff's Department. We do gravel road, we grade the gravel roads. We do provide all the... We do all the services that the courthouse provides. So, there's lots of services that you might not expect you're getting, but they're there, so...
Those other counties get those services, too. And again, you guys are not grading my roads. Miami County grades our road, and then the road from my road to thirty-three is a mess and has been for twenty-three years. I have personally been there. So, I just don't see what I'm paying more for. Can't see it, guys. And I can't see a six thousand dollar a year raising salaries per person. That's crazy. You're telling me there's two-hundred-and-ten people. That's what it comes to, six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars per person per year.
The largest... The largest increases are three dollars an hour. And those are for... Those are for position... I mean, that's like going from ten to thirteen. I mean, those are for positions that we just don't get applicants. Nobody wants to do.
You're still talking six thousand dollars per year per person.
I understand. I mean, do we either want to get rid of the... Not choose to fill in the blank on what service that is? We're seeing across the board. What do you mean?
So, you're saying everybody is going to get six thousand dollars per year?
No.
No. We did a...
So, are we breaking that neck?
So, we've done that in a couple ways. That is the total pay raises that all of our employees are going to get. That includes raises under our pay plan. So, under our pay plan, which we do every year, we give our employees, provided that they give a positive evaluation. If they're performing, they get two and a half percent. So, that amount includes two and a half percent. That amount also includes a one-point-six percent COLA, which one-point-six percent, I don't have to tell all of you, doesn't keep up with inflation, but it's one-point-six. So, that's four-point-one percent that every county employee, provided they get a positive evaluation, will get that. You didn't plan for that? Yes. Well, yeah, we plan for it every year. It's the best budget. You're talking raising it one-point-three million. Over and above what you planned? Well, we have to do that every year in order to pay them that additional amount. I mean, it takes that every year to continue giving them those raises. So, that's a portion of it. And then, the other part of it is we are doing a one-time pay adjustment, and those adjustments are either three dollars an hour, which is for a lot of our line entry-level positions because we're woefully behind there. Then, there's a two-dollar-an-hour category, and then, there's a one-dollar-an-hour category. So, there is our regularly scheduled pay raises, and this year, a one-time-only pay adjustment just so that we can be competitive with surrounding governments. That was the rationale for that. The thought being, we have to have people to provide services, and what we have found was that so many positions, we just weren't getting applicants for because we can't keep up with our competitors, whether that be other governments or the private sector. What about them? Not all salaried employees are getting an adjustment, but those that are would be a dollar-an-hour adjustment. Any other questions? What, Janet? We need a motion to close the...
Last chance, if anybody wants anything. I know the lady on the front row wants to say something. I'll entertain him. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, come on up, please. Come on up.
I'm sorry, what was the name? Loughlin? Okay.
Corner of Woodson in Nevada, in Franklin County. I'm a retiree from Johnson County Public Works, and Johnson County will not buy any CAT equipment. They claim they're too high, they're too expensive, and et cetera. And if you go up on their Public Works lot, there's not a piece of CAT equipment been up there, and a few that they've had, they've got rid of. I mean, there's all kinds of brands that compete, as in a cheaper brand that will do almost the same type of work. And I was just wondering why Franklin County's got so much CAT equipment out there.
Are motor graders CAT?
I don't... Some of them I think are. You got a CAT dozer out there, D-eight, or ten, or nine?
Our CAT motor graders because they're the best deal when you consider over the amount of time. We have a guaranteed buyback. We know how much they're going to cost, their service, because we're able to... The way we purchase them, keep newer equipment. We don't have the parts costs.
Johnson County don't look at it that way. They don't have one piece of CAT equipment.
Then, why'd you ask? I mean, that's the reason.
Well, what I'm comparing here is the fact that it doesn't look like you're really trying to get the best buy for the buck. You're wanting to buy Cadillacs and then sit back and claim that you're saving money, and that's not true.
We don't always buy cats, though. You'll see Kubota, John Deere out there if you go through the lot. Just, I mean, that's not true.
How much CAT equipment do you have?
We do have a lot of CAT equipment. We've had good luck with CAT equipment.
I bet you do. I'll tell you what, Johnson County wouldn't agree with how you guys do at all, and they got more roads asphalted than what you even got in the whole Aggum County on Chippin Seale and et cetera.
A lot of taxpayers in there, too. I mean, every county in the state's twenty miles by twenty miles, give or take.
Mileage-wise, yeah. I'm just talking about types of operation there and how they look at things. That's what I'm saying. But, I mean, all that dagum type of stuff like that's got heat, you're cutting edges and all that type of stuff. I mean, CAT ain't got no dagum advantage over nothing, but everybody thinks it because everybody likes it. That's just what I wanted to bring up because you're definitely doing things different than a big county like Johnson County do.
Anybody else?
Teresa Loughlin. You asked what department or what things should be cut. I have some pictures of roadwork that was not needed to be done, that when I inquired about it, why they were doing on private property, removing hedge rows and trees rows, they said, well, it'd benefit the county at some point. One of these is a dirt minimum-maintenance road, which we are on the other end of that minimum-maintenance road, and we requested assistance in removing hedge trees right along there and was told no. So, maybe the head of the department has changed between the times we inquired, maybe two years ago. I don't know. But that's a lot of money spent out there with expensive equipment, tearing up a road, which we had to call and tell them, you've now made it impassable to get down with farm equipment, which we have. And they kind of came out and smoothed it somewhat. But one individual gained a lot of tax dollars for something that didn't need to be done. And I have pictures, if any of you want to see what it is, on a minimum-maintenance road. So, I think maybe public works could be cut. I'm kind of like the lady over there. Our particular road on one of the sides of that property is maintained by the township. Franklin County doesn't do anything because we're on the county line road. So, I'm not seeing any benefit from public works. So, I'm thinking maybe public works is an area that could be cut. Cut something. I don't know if your name's...
It's Ian.
Ian. Don't take this that I'm attacking you, but it is very disturbing to see you laugh when someone brought up the fact of two-point-four or two-point-five percent increase, and you go, well, it's only two-point-four. Two-point-four is a lot. When you're a caper's retiree, you get no adjustment. What you go out the door is what you get. So, I'm asking you guys tonight, you say this budget hasn't been decided upon. Decrease it, please.
Anybody else like to speak?
My name's Greg Perry. I live at two-twenty-seven Downey Drive in Wellsville. I would like to start this by reading a verse out of the Bible. This is the people of Israel talking to the king of Israel, Rehoboam, son of Solomon. First Kings, twelve, four. "Your father made our yokes heavy. Now, therefore lessen the burden, burdensome service of your father and his heavy yoke, which he put on us, and we will serve you." Now, I realize that you people do not have power over all the taxes and all the inflation that has been hitting us, but you can not add more to it. Ask a farmer in this county about their fertilizer and fuel costs. They are double, triple, more than last year, and you want to raise their property taxes. It's going to add more to that, that cost of the food that's coming out of their fields. That will add to the yoke of everybody. I looked up a lot of studies before tonight about the people of the United States living paycheck to paycheck. The common number was between sixty-one and sixty-four percent of Americans. You will also be adding to the yoke of all of those people. When people are suffering, as a leader, you should look to lessen the suffering or at least not add to it. First Kings, twelve, fourteen. First Kings 12:14. "And he spoke to them according to the advice of the young men, saying, 'My father made your yokes heavy, but I will add to your yoke. My father chastised you with whips, but I will chastise you with scourges.'" This tax hike will be scourges to the people of Franklin County, and is insult to injury, and benefits no one. Thank you for listening, and God bless you guys.
Anybody else want to speak? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor of closing?
All right. Now we do the revenue. Okay, Jan, go ahead.
And we need a motion to open and close, uh, a motion and a second to open the revenue neutral right here.
Okay, we need a motion to open the hearing on the revenue neutral rate.
And he moved, and I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
So now, same process.
Okay, same process. Everybody want to talk about the revenue neutral? Everybody got a notice in the pay, uh, uh, from the county clerk about the revenue neutral? We're not going to be at revenue neutral, so there's required by the state law to send out notices to everybody, and if you want to talk about that, please come.
I'm sorry?
You have to pass this for your budget? Or you won't be able to make the budget, right?
We have to do both.
Part of the process, yeah.
I understand that, but you just pass the budget that raises it.
We have not, we have not passed the budget.
We just had the hearing.
You have questions about what the revenue neutral rate statement means? If you have questions about what revenue neutral means, I mean, you can come up and ask those questions now.
Okay, what does all that mean?
Uh, revenue neutral is, uh, is a rate that's determined on the, based on the current value of the property and what was levied last year. And as we talked about in the, in, in the budget presentation, um, we plan to go up $410,000 this year, and so we will not be revenue neutral. But also, as I said at the end of the presentation, the new improvements will cover 75% of that.
In plain speak, what are we doing here right now? What is the revenue neutral deal? It's why the hell is my check bigger than I'm writing now than it was last year? It just has to do with that dollar amount. Forget, forget valuations, forget, uh, mill rates, forget whatever. Is my check going up? Yeah, well, that's what this is. That's basically what it is. So we get back to that 2.4% that we've been talking about. The actual dollar that's going up is 2.4 versus what it was last year. Money that's generated from, uh, property tax.
Can I hear you?
Yeah, I, I. This is just the, the increase that it's going to take for us to operate our government, for us to buy fuel, for us to buy crossroad tubes, for us to give our employees the raises that we feel like they deserve. Like, we're not adding services. We had to remove services just to keep it at the amount that it is.
If we were to continue doing business the same as we did the prior year, just doing rough math, it would have been closer to 10, 12%. I think if we didn't choose to close down the juvenile detention center, and if we didn't just go into that page with some of the efficiencies game.
Refinance debt, payoff debt. Are there any questions about, any more questions about the revenue neutral process?
Evaluation of your home is assessment is assessment of the house I live in went up $20,000.
Well, it's supposed to, what's supposed to? I have houses that have doubled. The end of it, it's supposed to be reflective of the value. Basically, would you, it went up 20, but would you sell it for that? I mean, I'd, I mean, say the same thing. Like, I have properties that have doubled, and I it absolutely does. I have properties that have doubled, more than doubled. I have one that's up 300 and some percent. I understand, but I'm saying, you, the question was, why has it gone up? Because its value's gone up. Like I say, I've got one that's more than three times. I wouldn't sell it for that, though. I mean, what it's appraised for, I'd rather hang on to it.
They have to look at the similar properties and what they sold for. And that's, so it's basically what, if you sold it, what could you get out of it?
It's reflective of its value.
Yeah, I, I, I will say this. It, it's an incredibly frustrating time to be a homeowner, because with, with the, and I think, and Lord knows, maybe more than anyone in this room, I don't want to talk about the pandemic. I'm sick of hearing about it. But I think the pandemic caused some of this. We have to value homes based on comparable sales. And with the, the effects of the pandemic, what they had, what they created in terms of labor shortages, shutdowns, the value of properties just went up. Homes started selling for a lot more. And the state of Kansas requires us to base our values off of comparable sales. We have to do it that way. And, and that is why our appraiser must have determined that comparable properties to yours sold at such a price that caused yours to go up 20,000. I hear your frustration, and I want to tell you, I would be too, because it, it, it's, it's hard. Like, you, you know, you all have shared personal anecdotes. I want to share one. I grew up in this county. Like, I grew up in Richmond, Kansas. My parents owned a, a tiny unsuccessful restaurant there. We grew up on a fixed income. Like, I tell people, I had a bike and I had a baseball glove. That's what I had growing up. Don't think I've lost touch with that. We don't want to do this. Like, here in about five minutes, I'm going to recommend that we pass this budget. It is not because I want to raise your taxes. It's not. It is because I think this is the minimum that we need to keep staffed with good employees that can provide the core services that we need to provide. We've tried to cut. We've cut a department. We've cut positions, and we're committed to continuing to do that and finding relief where we can. But just given the state of the world right now, and we don't like it either. They don't like sitting up here doing this. Like, it's just what we feel like we have to do.
Yeah. And I, instead, on the, I mean, on the backside is about half the cost. So if you give somebody a $3,000 raise, it costs almost $3,000 for your withholdings, your work comp, your retirement, your health insurance. I mean, I think that's maybe where the discrepancy is. We'd be happy to show you the information exactly where it goes, but it's not without thought. And, I mean, the math's been done. No, I'm saying, take any given amount of money on the back end. You know rural water's not a department of the county, though, right? You know rural water's not a department, it's not us, yeah.
Is your mobile home a, you pay personal property tax on it, not real estate?
Yes.
And those are, those are set by the state, aren't they? No?
I don't know. I have, I have state and I have county, but state and county.
Come on up, Jamie. Come on up.
Personal property, uh, personal property trailers are valued at, uh, replacement cost, less depreciation, depreciation. Trailer and, um, pedal condition.
That's totally separate.
Yes.
Don't have water.
I, I, I would imagine that a lot of your, your value increases.
And and, and so I, I don't want to speak for Jamie, but if we want to have those discussions, there, there's a forum. Right now, we're respectfully, please understand that, we're in the middle of a, well, we're in the middle of a revenue neutral hearing, and, and, and well, no, it's
I believe what he's saying is, if you want to dispute the value of your property, this isn't, we, we're not here to dispute the value of individual pieces of property. There's a process for that.
I understand that, but there is a line on our county tax that says this so this is the only one that we knew, we didn't know about.
So like, you didn't know about, like, the school district or this? You wouldn't have a city or municipality, you'd have a township?
And talk about your values, your, the values of your property?
And so ever you guys decide, our taxes will
County portion.
Did you get the statement in March from us regarding your value of your property? So on that statement, did you get in March, it has a process to dispute your value of your property?
That is correct. Unfortunately, I was in a victory court class. I was not
Well, well, are there any?
The, the 400,000 is, is total increase to our budget. It's not necessarily improvements. It's a, it's, um, composed of all of those things that we talked about. The salaries, the software, the fuel, um, all of those things that are, that encompass our budget. Those are Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, the new improvements that are like, like, just for instance, something that went on the tax roll this year is the new Dollar General store in Princeton. So when we take new improvement value, and we apply this tax rate to it, it would generate close to $300,000, which is 75% of the $400,000 that were going up. So in effect, then our, all of our other property tax, uh, bills would only go up $100,000 collectively over all of our properties. Those, yes.
I think that's just all based on property values, which is based on the sale of comparable properties. Any more questions about the revenue neutral rate? I would take a motion to close the hearing.
Last chance to talk about revenue neutral.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor of closing the revenue neutral rate hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, you have the, the budget in front of you. Do you have any questions for us about it? And we've been through every line of this.
No questions. It's kind of, I admit, that a lot, I've been around probably 20 years of budgets now, and this has probably been the toughest one with, I can tell you this, gentlemen and other people come in with their day-to-day acquisitions or bills, day-to-day stuff. It ain't nothing new. It's coberts, it's fuel, it's maintenance, it's insurance, it's, it's everything. And it's probably been the roughest one of the whole bunch in my whole 20 years of being here. And one year, I know we dropped a mill, maybe 10 mills. And that was probably the worst thing we ever did, because now we've been fighting for several years to, to gain back what we did. You know, we thought we were doing a real great thing at the time. And, and the deal about your modular home, I was in the business for 40 years. I lived in a modular home in 1979. And mine keep going up and up. And there's 80 acres right across the road from me. Sold twice in the last three years. Ungodly amount of money. Just a pile of brush. I mean, brush, you couldn't feed a cow on it, on the whole 80 acre. And we got people coming down, and every two, three years, it sells again for twice as much as it sold the year before. And nothing aggravates me more than just what you're talking about and that. But, uh, and what we like to do a lot more since I've been here, we did 50 miles of new hard surface roads. We ain't done none the last 10 years, because we spent all the money we had to try and do as much as we could back when things were cheap a price to do it. And the maintainers, I know they brought to us, we used to do it on a three-year turnaround. Now we're doing it on a five-year turnaround, seven-year turnaround. Ambulances, we used to stand on a regular turnaround the last three or four or five years. We take the boxes that are on the ambulance and keep putting them on new chassis and just upgrading the boxes and trying to cut costs and save money that way. When we buy salt, we use about three or four counties and three or four cities. We all go together and buy our salt to get a reduced rate. So I understand totally, and when these people in here keep bringing in the, and employee wise, for the, the years I've been here, we're probably down 30 or 40 employees. And if we want to go back to the old way, we'd probably cut another 30, 40 employees. We can do away with our ambulance service and hire new. We could go to, back to the township, uh, maintainers, which they had 16 of them in the county, uh, which we only run about
Nine.
Nine, instead of paying, might be paying nine people now instead of 16 you guys were paying for before. So, and I understand it all totally. I have to, you know, go through it every day myself also. So if I pass anything or increase, I'm passing it on myself, too. So I wouldn't have any insurance. So I went down, I'm tired also. Yeah, I've been for years, so I have to suffer right along with the, not having a day-to-day job anymore. To go along with it. And it's probably been one of the hardest budgets ever to do. Trying, one time we were down, we had 27 positions open in the county. And that's not providing you guys very good service and we got almost 30 people down. And, and it was a dangerous thought, like the sheriff's department, the amb, ambulance service. I'm not talking to office people. I'm talking to emergency people, so that's all I get.
Any questions for Janet or I?
I think Derek and Janet have worked very hard. Our department ads and elected officials all worked very hard to try to keep their budgets flat as possible. And just like a lot of things that came out during the hearing here is that inflation is killing us. Over the last year now, COVID's hit us very hard and how to deal with that and pretty much got through that.
It's not. We're feeling it too. And now I can go and squeeze 2.4% out of that rock.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Roy. Go ahead.
So just like Don said, this is, this has been a tough year to do, do a budget and it's seems like it's, every year it gets a little tougher and tougher the way things are going. So any other comments from other commissioners? I entertain a motion.
And to be clear, the motion is to approve the 2023 budget.
We have to do that, revenue neutral.
Okay.
To exceed the revenue neutral.
Thanks, Janet.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the revenue neutral 2023 Franklin County budget.
To exceed the revenue neutral. We're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Yes, to exceed the revenue.
Yeah, I will make the motion that we will exceed the revenue neutral rate for 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Now, uh, next motion would be approve the 2023 Franklin County budget. I got a motion.
Second. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Well, that concludes our meeting for tonight. I'll take a, a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Uh, where at, Chair?